Recording now. Hello, everyone. Welcome. Good to see you all. It still feels like a miracle to me when I turn on Zoom and all these people are there in front of me. Thanks so much for tuning in this evening. We're very glad to have this time with you. Rena and Sarah Herman. We were just coordinating and wanting to welcome everyone. I know that there are some people here who don't know each other. So Rena and Sarah, I'm going to suggest that we in fact do a quick go through the Zooms here and just ask people to say hello. And if any particular child is bringing you here this evening, if you want to say who that child is and how old they are, that would be great, too. Rena, Sarah, can I just go ahead and?
Yeah, and if everybody could just change their name so that it's actually your name and not someone else in your household's name, that's super helpful.
So I think I know everyone here, but I'm Rachel Hirsch, one of the rabbis at Adach Shalom. And just for welcoming Rena, Sarah, do you want to?
I'm Sarah. I also work at Adach Shalom, and you get lots of emails from me about children's programming.
And I'm Rena Melchberg, Executive Director of Adach Shalom.
Yeah, and Rabbi Fred is very much with us in spirit this evening. He's just on the last couple of days of some time off, so he will definitely be in the mix with us, starting at the end of this week, actually. So once again, welcome. And just because we're on Zoom and people are in different orders on different computers, I'm just going to go ahead and invite you as I see you. Okay, so Kate, can we start with you?
Hi, I'm Kate. I have two kids in various programming. Lior is five. He's a rising first grader, a very young rising first grader, but a rising first grader, and Ella just turned eight.
Great, thank you. Marcy Greenstein.
Hi, Marcy Greenstein, Co-President of Adach Shalom. No children have brought me here. I have brought myself. Happy to meet you all.
Thank you. And Michelle. Yeah.
Michelle Gaberitz, I have two kids, a rising second grader named Rafi, and then a rising kindergartner named Ella.
Great, welcome. Nice to meet you, Michelle. Mim?
I'm Mim Eisenstein. I'm a member of the board. Actually, I'm the Vice President for Learning. And I'm the child who brought me here.
Rachel and David?
Hi, so we're Rachel Singer and David Weinberg. We've got an incoming kindergartner named.
And we have a three-year-old named Shoshana. She's currently not sleeping. We may hear her, but we'll mute ourselves.
That's okay. Great, thank you. Erin?
Hi, I'm Erin Witten. I have twin, rising, fifth grade girls, Anna and Molly.
Great to see you. And Rana?
I was double muted, sorry. So I'm Rana Popkin, and my son Huxley is a rising second grader.
Yes, excellent. Great. Shelley Sadowski?
Hi, I'm Shelley Sadowski. I'm a member of the board, immediate past co-president, and I'm here to, out of interest and potentially personal interest for members of my family.
Great, 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 great. Audrey?
Which one?
Oh, sorry, Audrey Lyon, and I know Audrey Rothstein is also here.
That never happens, that there's two Audreys on a call. My name is Audrey Lyon. I'm the Chair of Jewish Studies, and also my child Naomi Weintraub is a teacher, was a teacher this past year in the Torah School.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. Okay, going to Rachel Loving?
Hi, I'm Rachel Loving. We have three children, and we're looking into this program for our son, who is a rising second grader.
Great. Thank you. Mark Bernstein?
Sorry, I had trouble unmuting, too. Father of Lila Bernstein, who was in the Jewish education program this past year, and she sent me here today. She's rising.
Yes, great. Nice to see you. Audrey Rothstein?
Hi, everyone. Audrey Rothstein, my kids have risen and are through school, but I have a very dear interest in our education of the kids in the synagogue.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Madame Pam?
Hi, I'm Pam Summers. I am a sixth grade teacher, and this year a seventh grade teacher, part of the time an eighth grade teacher, and I'm the Teen Programs Coordinator for Adach Shalom.
Excellent. Lucky us. Michelle Adato?
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Adato, and my son Alex is a rising fourth grader, and then I have a rising pre-Ker, too.
And would you like to introduce your spouse?
Oh, yes. Well, he's on here, too. He can introduce himself. Stephen Horowitz. Steve, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Stephen Horowitz, spouse of Michelle Adato, and I have the exact same kids as she has. And our rising pre-Ker is also an A student in Tatchabat.
Yes, she is.
Not quite sure why we're in different rooms, but for some reason we are.
I couldn't find you, Michelle.
So let's go to our co-president, Judy Ackerman.
Hi, I'm co-president, and education is just so basic to everything we do, so that's why I'm here to listen.
Great, thank you for tuning in. Chaya Richmond?
Hi, everyone. I'm Chaya. I have two children, one Psy, who has, is not in the Torah School anymore and is in college. And the other one also is not in Torah School, but is a teenager in high school, and that is Noam. And I, this past year, I taught the kindergarten, no, not kindergarten, the first and second grade kids. And it was wonderful, and the kids were amazing. And yeah.
Great, and we're really grateful to you, Chaya, for all that you've brought to those kids.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, it was a joy.
So I just want to, I think there are just three remaining, Cheryl Silver, and then Vanessa and Joanna. If you would just, Vanessa, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Vanessa, Vanessa Heisman. I'm on the board also, which is partly why I'm here. I also have a fourth grader, Addie, or no, rising fifth grader now, and rising eighth grader Benjamin.
Great to see you. And Cheryl Silver? Oh, Cheryl, you're muted.
Thank you. Hi, it's nice to see all of you. I just tuned in to learn with you about the program coming up for the new year and years to come. And also, you know, I can mention that my role, you know, in the Program Council is membership, and young families and our students are a very important part of our membership. So I just wanted to hear, hear your questions and also to hear this, this updated commentary from Rabbi Rachel.
Great, thank you. And Joanna, and I think that's Nora with you.
Yep. Hi, I'm Joanna Sidon, and this is Nora. She's a rising fifth grader. And we're here because we get emails and we show up. Yeah, excited to learn more about what's happening for next year.
Thank you so much. Great to see you. So again, thank you all, and thanks for allowing us to take this few minutes at the beginning just to say hello and to, to welcome everyone to this time together. We have some, some important updates to share with you and some things that are going to look a little different than the way we've been doing things for the last number of years. This has been, needless to say, a time like no other, the last year and a half. And looking at these faces of our, of our, some of our families, some of our students' parents that are, you know, here with us tonight, and you know, I feel like you all deserve a gold medal for, yeah, for the, the amazing parenting that you've been doing for the last year and a half especially. And we're incredibly appreciative and affirming of your commitment to your kids' Jewish education in the midst of everything else that you're juggling. So we have a couple of things we wanted to screen share, and I just lost Sarah, but I'm sure she's still here.
I have it.
Okay. Rena or Sarah, I thought I would start, but I'm completely happy stepping aside if one of you wants to take the lead and.
No, that's great. Okay, Rena, if you can screen share, that would be awesome.
Yep.
Okay. So we have spent a lot of time thinking about what would work best for our families as we all now start to emerge from this COVID cocoon that we've been in. So I'm, I'm seeing a screen share screen, but it's just black right now.
Oh. Okay, hold on. Let me try again. Hold on now.
While you're pulling that up, we actually gave this, this new approach to Jewish learning a new name. So we're letting go of, of the Adach Shalom Torah School name for our program. It's now going to be called Limud at Adach Shalom, and Limud is simply the Hebrew word for studies and learning. But of course, this is to focus on learning for our elementary, middle school, and high school kids. So still just a black screen, Rena.
So weird. Okay.
So it's a fun, I can keep.
Pulling it up, I'll share in a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know how many of you had a chance to take a peek at the, the quick video that we put together, just to try to lay out some of the elements. So just walk us through those. Three main components to this, there we go. Three main components to our new approach, Limud at Adach Shalom. And I'd like to start, well, Sarah, don't, yeah, go back up to the top of this page, there, right there. Shabbat has always been a very important centerpiece of our community's life at Adach Shalom, and it's going to continue to be. We are moving our formal classroom learning off of Shabbat so that we can make space for, for our families and kids to be together with each other, with the larger community, with our Shabbat traditions, with praying together and learning together, and also schmoozing together and playing together. You know, we call Oneig Shabbat, the joy of Shabbat. So I'd like to just walk you through this, hopefully fairly quickly, and let me go through this, and then we'll definitely have time for questions and input from, from all of you here tonight. For our littlest members, our youngest children, it's going to look very much like it has for the last many years with our extraordinary Taut leader, Ms. Ellie. She will continue to lead Tatchabat for children under five years old. And as you can see, we'll add some other special gatherings for little ones and their families. And then Ms. Ellie, as she likes to be called, will also lead a special tefillah, a special prayer gathering for children in Gan and Aleph, so kindergarten and first grade. And then they will also have some special learning time that's geared just for them on Shabbat morning. I'm going to come back to where it says monthly B'Yachad in a minute, but to continue down where it says Kita Bet through Hay, we're asking all of our elementary families to come join us for Shabbat morning. Our kids will either be in the main sanctuary for a special family-friendly service, again, I'm going to say more about that in a minute, or participate on the off weeks in Shabbat Assefa, which is Hebrew for Shabbat gathering. It'll be a specifically elementary-age-targeted Shabbat morning prayer time. It will be led by our teens. It will be supervised by our, our adult teacher, one of our very longstanding beloved adult teachers. But we think it'll be really special for our elementary kids to see our teens leading. And the elementary kids will also be supported and invited to lead things as they learn them. And, excuse me, our adult supervisor, Rena, can I say who it's going to be? Michael Becker? No, not yet. Okay, I'm going to leave that behind the curtain for now. But he will be working with our kids during the week. In other words, reaching out to our elementary kids to help them get ready for the parts they're going to lead. After Shabbat Assefa for our elementary kids, there will be Shabbat activities for them, celebrating Shabbat through art, through games, through outdoor activities. And it's never, it's never a complete gathering unless there's something to munch on, so there definitely will be snacks. And all ending in time for us to eventually be together as a full community for lunch. And for those that are, that are new to Adach Shalom or visit, haven't had a chance to visit much yet, Shabbat lunch has been a really special feature of our communal life for many years, and we're looking forward to resuming that as soon as it's safe to do so. I don't know, we're feeling optimistic, I guess cautiously optimistic, that things will continue, the pandemic that has, you know, controlled our lives for over a year and a half now will continue to, to settle, and we will have an opportunity to, to be together. So before I go on from there, I just want to say something about where it says monthly B'Yachad. And Sarah, are you able to just highlight that where it says monthly B'Yachad, so people can see what I'm talking about? Yes, right there. B'Yachad just means together. And we're really looking for a way to bring our families, our children, our members of all ages, into the sanctuary together once a month for prayer, for Torah. We think it's really important for our children, not only to be together with each other, but to be together with all different ages of adults and to see that Judaism is something that's for our entire lifespan. It's not just for third graders or for kindergartners or for high school students. It's even for people who are growing into all different decades of their maturity. So that monthly B'Yachad service will be tailored, especially accessible for families. I guess I want to emphasize that we're, we're not trying to make it extremely pediatric. We want it to feel like a grown-up service that our children can feel comfortable in, so they can learn to find themselves, locate themselves within that larger Jewish living picture. I just keep going back to memories of my own childhood when I, you know, I learned the idea of putting on a tallit just from watching other people put on their tallit tote. And then at some point, I was taught how to do it myself. But we really think that immersive learning is very important, and that can only happen if parents and kids are joining together for that. So it's, that's one of the things that I guess I want to highlight that's a little bit different than we've been doing for the last many years at Adach Shalom. Shabbat morning is not going to be a time to drop off kids at the synagogue, but a time for families to be together. There's the monthly B'Yachad service in the sanctuary or the Shabbat Assefa. And Sarah, could I ask you to highlight that? Shabbat Assefa? Yeah, right there. I'm here like with a cursor, like an idiot, trying to highlight myself, but obviously that's not going to work. So Shabbat Assefa, again, what we're, which is our name for junior congregation, is for the kids themselves. Parents are welcome to join for that if they want to, or maybe they would want to come just when their children are leaving something. But we really, we're really asking all of our families to make a commitment to be together on Shabbat, to be part of the learning together, and to support our kids as they grow from the littlest into elementary, into middle, et cetera.
Can I, I'm sorry, this is Chaya, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I, before I forget my question, can I ask a question right now, or are you okay with that?
Sure.
Regarding, just regarding the B'Yachad service, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. The monthly service, is that going to be, obviously you said it's going, it's not going to be toned down or whatever, I can't remember the word you used, but it's going to be a service for everybody. But is that going to be something that, that kids or the kids take part in the service and lead part of the service and?
Yep, as they're ready to do.
Okay.
We're very much wanting to strengthen the coordination between our Shabbat participation and our, our more formal learning that goes on. So I'm picking a name out of the air here. If Lila Bernstein is working on learning a specific prayer in her regular class, we'll make sure to coordinate that with the services that are happening on Shabbat so that she has a chance to, to participate and to lead.
And just like that, would it be also geared for the teens, so that if the teens want to read Torah, then they could also do that?
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. So I wanted to go ahead down to the part of the page that says Traditions, Hebrew and Judaic Studies. And this is really what we would have in the past called Torah School, except we really want to move it to during the week for our elementary families. We are inviting our Kita Bet through Hay in two combined groups. So as you can see, it's Kita Bet and Gimel, second and third together, and Kita Dalit and Hay, fourth and fifth together. So two different classes that are both combined with two groups. Sorry. To meet on Zoom on Monday, late afternoons, and we're still sorting out exactly what time that'll be, wanting to coordinate with our kids' afternoon schedules, like what time will they get home from school, et cetera. So we'll have some more information on that very shortly. And this is just capitalizing on some of the surprising success we've discovered with Zoom. We've been using remote learning for Hebrew language instruction for several years, long before the pandemic started. But we hadn't been for, for what we, what we have in the past called Torah School until this year. And we found that it was a really nice option for our families. As, as many of you know, and maybe all of you know, our community has a very wide geographic map. We have members who live all over the DC metro area, and making it to Adach Shalom on a weekday afternoon is really difficult. And especially for kids that have been in school all day, who may have homework or other activities, and then dinner, and then evening things, et cetera. We really wanted to take advantage of the positive qualities of the technology and also hopefully make life easier for our families. So that Monday afternoon will be the time that our kids will be learning about, as the title says, Traditions and Judaic Studies. I'm skipping over Hebrew for the moment. We are using this wonderful curriculum that we just started losing, using last year called Shalom Learning. It's a curriculum that was developed for online learning long before the pandemic. It was developed for use in this format because it's a, it's a useful format. I'm going to skip down to where it says Hebrew Time. Hebrew Time is going to continue to be one-on-one tutoring for our Bet through Vav students, second grade through sixth grade. And that'll be, it's just under an hour, one-on-one with a tutor to practice reading, excuse me, writing, and getting used to the language in, in each grade appropriate way. I'm going to save the things that we want to share about middle and high school for a little bit later in the hour. In fact, it's coming up on eight o'clock right now. And I think, let's pause here and see if there are other questions or input, and maybe, Sarah, we can put away the screen share for now. See if anybody has questions. Just looking in the chat to see. Rachel and David, you're asking, will more info be available about timing for the various programming, not just days? Absolutely. Yes. You know, what's the expression that we've all been using this past year and a half? We are flying the plane while we're building it. So that, that has sort of calmed down now, thankfully. There's a little less of that sort of feeling of, okay. But even now, like, we've been having, for instance, our main Shabbat service all for the last year and a half has started at 10:00 AM, and so now we seem to be carrying that over as we resume meeting in person. That's, that's, maybe it's not such a significant shift, but it's a bit of a shift. We also are clearly making some decisions about streamlining our main Shabbat morning service so that it no longer will be three hours long. Even I, who love to daven and love to read Torah, can find three hours to be a long time. So, go ahead, Rena.
Yeah, no, I was just, just to pick up on that. And Kate's question, we'll definitely have more information available. I wanted to also add, Monday will probably be about an hour. We think that, that the kids, I mean, we hope and pray that everybody will be back in real-life school in September so that Zoom School for, for Judaics is just the one hour of Zoom School that our kids will have beginning in the fall. And right now, we're, because of the size of our classes, we're proposing this Bet Gimel, Dalit, Hay. If our numbers swell in different class combinations, we'll break that up. So that's not, that's not an absolute. So I just wanted to add that.
Yeah. Please. Carolyn?
Sorry about that. Thanks. So I may be speaking against the grain here for many people, so I recognize that. But, you know, we joined the, the kind of Torah Education Program or Jewish Studies, the aspect of it this past year. And before we came in, we were aware, as we understood, that the Torah School was, I think, 10 to 12 on Saturdays. When it switched to Zoom, it was an hour and a half, and, you know, under, and we, we weren't aware of how the two hours were spent. We saw, we went and visited and saw some classes, but we, we weren't, we're not so familiar with that. For the hour and a half, maybe it was because it was on Zoom, maybe this is typical for the in-person, too. Maybe the first 15 minutes was the kids, you know, bonding and connecting and getting to know each other, which is incredibly valuable and important. But since it was an hour and a half, that kind of left about an hour and 15 minutes for, you know, learning about the traditions and the holidays and, and everything else and the values and everything, which of course we're teaching at home, too. So that was a significant reduction in kind of that instructional time compared to what had been before. And then we saw with the Monday that it's planned for an hour, and most likely, they're not going to start, you know, the first minute, okay, let's talk about, there's going to be some connection time. And so it seems like it's more like a 45 to 50-minute instruction on traditions, values, holidays. And that just seems very, it seems stripped down quite a bit from what we were, what we understood happened pre-Zoom, and even from what was going on during Zoom. And I guess that's something that, that I was a little, that I was kind of questioning or, or kind of had a question about when I was looking at this modified programming and was hoping that that could be spoken to.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer it. And then Rena, Sarah, other Mim, maybe you have things to add. So previously on Shabbat mornings, our kids would come. The morning programs officially started at 9:30 for our kids. I know that the actual start time was 9:30, 9:45, because families.
And I'm probably misremembering. Yeah.
No, it's okay. I'm just explaining, since you're asking, you know, with such.
Yeah, please.
Comparing these. comparing these.
Yeah.
On Shabbat morning, all of our kids participated in some kind of Tefillah. So their classroom time, if it was meant to be 9:30 to 12, that was supposed to be the, the, you know, the time of the Torah School. Forty-five minutes of that would be spent in Tefillah. And then there would also be recess time because our experience was that, you know, kids just needed that chance to stretch their legs and move around. So in fact, the actual instruction time is, I think it's actually even a little bit more than what it was before. And we think by breaking it up into, you know, different sections, like Monday afternoon is classroom learning time. Shabbat morning is Tefillah and Shabbat time and togetherness time, which also, I think is, I really have to emphasize again, a very important part of the learning. It's not didactic instructional time.
Right.
But it's really important for kids. If, if one of our main goals in our whole communal enterprise is identity formation and cultural inculcation and maybe even religious inculcation, that can't all happen in a classroom.
Definitely.
Some of it has to happen in authentic community time and, and time with the tradition. So that's part of why we have separated these elements out, so that we can give a classroom teacher a lesson plan and a focus for this hour that we have with our, in your case, you know, fifth graders. I wanna say that at least in my perception, I think that having the kind of Shabbat school that we have had for many years, which has had many blessings, it's been in many ways, a beautiful model. It's also been, I think, challenging for us to recruit and retain the, the quality teachers that we'd really like to have. I'm not, I'm saying that in the most general way. I mean, we've had some wonderful teachers along the way. But generally, people who are passionate and devoted to whatever kind of Jewish life they're devoted to, they don't, they're not really willing to give up a whole year or more of, of their Shabbat life to spend it in a classroom, you know, teaching Aleph Bet or teaching the history of Pesach, or whatever else it is, before questions. And so our hope is that by shifting in this direction, we will be able to, again, like enlist and, and maintain relationships with teachers who we think could be stronger for our kids.
No, that's really helpful. Thank you for all that.
I would just add the community piece. Because our kids were only coming on Saturday mornings, it was really important, you know, time to hang out with your friends, which also made frankly, sometimes a struggle between wanting to hang out with your friends and wanting to sit in class. And, and I think by having, by creating the kind of Shabbat morning we wanna create, we're giving the kids the time to get to know each other and learn together and play together and hang out together in this time and, and in different ages, because it's always nice to see the second graders hanging with the fifth graders and all of that. But then, again, as, as Rabbi Rachel was saying, on Monday night, we'll buckle down for an hour and have our studies.
Ma'am, you, I think you were also gonna say something.
Yeah, I, I may be talking a little out of turn, but I think one of the things that's gonna happen, I'm hoping one of the things that will happen, is there'll be some adjustments in the curriculum. You know, our curriculum is so synagogue oriented and worship oriented. If we have what, in my childhood and in many of your, many of your childhoods, was known as junior congregation, where that's where you learn your synagogue skills and practice your synagogue skills, then maybe in the hour on Monday night, there can be a little bit more intensive focus on something other than synagogue skills. Now, I'm not sure the Shalom learning readily adapts to that, but I would certainly advocate for adapting it in that direction, so that it isn't repetitive and so that it's clear there are other, from a reconstructionist point of view, that there are other things, other aspects to Judaism besides worship.
Yes.
That is not the only thing we wanna teach about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I wanna answer Michelle's question in the chat. The monthly B'Yachad and the Kabbalat Shabbat services, they're listed down at the bottom of that packet, and we'll send that out again, and it's everywhere. We'll make sure you get it. They are for everyone, right? So they're not, yes, they're gonna be family friendly. Yes, we're gonna have some kids lead some prayers and blessings, but they're, they're community events. So the B'Yachad service is gonna be in our normal synagogue, I mean, in our sanctuary at our normal time with everyone. So yes, of course, kindergarten and first grade is welcome. Your Tachabatters are welcome if they wanna be there. And same for the, the Kabbalat Shabbats. Again, they're family friendly. We're gonna make them hopefully fun and engaging for your kids and like a cool opportunity to do something in front of the community. But they're gonna be community events, so hopefully there'll be lots of other people there without kids, and we'll all have dinner together afterward and everyone can tell your first grader how awesome it was that they led whatever blessing they led. The only few times that it won't happen, Junior Assefah, the Shabbat Assefah, is like Thanksgiving weekend. I don't think we need Shabbat Assefah that weekend. Probably most of you will wanna just be home decompressing, or you're gonna be out of town. But that is all kind of laid out in those dates below. And when there's not one, we'll probably send an email just to be like, don't show up.
Yeah, absolutely. Or specifically children's Shabbat activities, Shabbat Assefah and the breakout activities I was describing will follow like an academic schedule.
Right.
So whenever there's a holiday break.
Right. And there are blackout dates. If you look all the way at the bottom, like it says, no classes on these dates. So you can just kind of be aware.
Go ahead, Chaya.
So, clearly I didn't read, I mean, I've read the information, but I don't remember everything. The when we're talking about all of this, are we really just talking about kindergarten and Aleph? And then Bet to Hay? When you're talking about like the B'Yachad service, are we talking about just? Or are we talking about also the teens? Because I I mean, to make teenagers come to synagogue.
Right. Well, I, I think anyone who's ever been a parent of a teenager knows there's really nothing you can make them do.
Right.
Speaking as a mom myself.
So how are we going, so if we are talking about bringing teenagers to the synagogue and being a part?
Yeah.
What, or is that a whole separate part of this?
Yeah, there's a whole separate
Maybe the
and high school plan in place. And the, the B'Yachad service, the monthly B'Yachad service is not targeted for our teens. We don't necessarily expect them to jump out of bed and come on over. Some of them have already agreed to be teen leaders. So those that have, have agreed to, to come and be present and be leaders. But we, we recognize that the teens kind of need a room of their own, so to speak, also. And so we, we have plans to make sure they get that. And I don't know, Pam, you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm sure some of you have either attended or had children who have participated in the bi-annual Teen Torah Takeovers. We just had one. And that is completely teen-led. But I do know that there are so many young people who actually enjoy reading Torah, chanting Haftarah, getting up and leading a discussion. And so I think that it doesn't just have to be on those two times in the year, that some of them can take a leadership role in the B'Yachad services as well. And I should say, the High Holidays is gonna be kind of like a sneak preview of, we are going to have B'Yachad services for both Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, which is on this very model. So.
Yeah, I, I know that our, our Yantif, our Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, B'Yachad services, the ones that are targeted for this, this age group have been so spectacular because of the presence of those teens. So I'm looking forward to, to having that again this year. And, you know, I mean, I think if we've learned anything in the last year and a half, it's flexibility is gonna be, and adaptability is gonna be really important because even with this plan laid out, you know, you know as well as I do that the, the pandemic progression or evolution is still unfolding. And we really are as optimistic as anyone else that we'll just continue to be able to be back in person. And obviously, we're gonna be listening to the authorities, our own COVID advisory group at Adach Shalom, and also Rochelle Willensky, who's now, you know, I feel like one of my best friends, to see, you know, what's, what's the right step forward for us. So these plans are all being presented as if we'd be able to be back in person safely. See if there are other questions. And we, we did say that we would spend some time on middle and high school. I don't know that we have any, I guess we have some.
Yeah, no, we do.
We do.
We have Rena and Vanessa and
Oh yeah, Rena's here. Great. Okay. All right. So Sarah, would you be
Chaya.
Put that screen share back up again so we could see? Yes. Okay. So our Vav, Zion and Chet, which is middle school. Vav is sixth grade, Zion is seventh grade, Chet is eighth grade, are gonna follow, so I guess I'll break it down like this. Kita Vav, the sixth grade, is gonna follow very much the same curriculum that it's been following for the last many years. We, we have, we feel like we've landed with really a wonderful program for our sixth graders. And I wanna add that, I would say that for for our kids who are not in day school, but even for kids who are in Jewish day school, it's still a wonderful way for them to get to know each other and to share their knowledge and to get to know something about the way our community approaches Jewish life. So that will be on Sunday mornings, again, not on Shabbat, because we want our sixth graders to be able to come to shul on Shabbat. So they are in the last year of, of rising towards their b'mitzvah celebrations. And we want and, and expect for them to have a very strong presence on Shabbat and to participate in leading and so on. We are gonna take advantage of Zoom for Kita Vav in the winter, when it's cold and dark. We will go back to what we did this past year with sixth graders, which was that we met with them on Shabbat, Moze Shabbat, the end of Shabbat, about five o'clock, and then had a chance to make Havdalah together at the end of the session. It worked really well. In fact, I think for, for one particular unit of the sixth grade year, which is what we call our, our Chavrutah, family study unit, it worked especially well. So we're looking forward to, to doing that again. And then in the spring, when the weather warms up and Shabbat becomes a longer day again, we will invite Vav back into the buildings on Sunday mornings. Zion and Chet. So Rena, Sarah, you have to hold me back from getting too deeply in the weeds here. Sort of had my head in this a lot, and, and Pam as well. We've had a seventh grade curriculum for the last several years that mostly has focused on Israel and Shoah and the Holocaust. And some time spent on comparative Judaism and comparative religion. And we wanna maintain all of that important learning, but we are going to rotate the, that curriculum into eighth grade. So we want our eighth graders to have a chance to engage with those topics that are really complex and, you know, morally really challenging. But of course, our current seventh graders just had that curriculum. So as eighth graders, we're not gonna give it to them again, obviously. So this coming year, just for this year, we're going to bring our seventh and eighth graders together in a different way and work with them on a curriculum that is based on a wonderful exploration of Jewish morality, Jewish values through, through the organization called Moving Traditions. Many of you are familiar with that. It's the organization that has produced this special program called Roche Hodesh, which we've run for several years. And I feel like as I'm talking, I must be throwing information out way too fast here for people to absorb it. We want our seventh graders and now our rising eighth graders to have a chance to explore some of the big Jewish questions as they're learning and getting ready to perform, so to speak, big Jewish rituals. The seventh graders are spending time learning their Torah readings and learning parts of the prayer service to lead for their b'mitzvah celebrations. And we wanna give them some space to explore, what does all this mean? Why is it important for me to do all of this? And what are the teachings that are behind all of this liturgy and all of this Torah that I'm learning to learning the, the technical part of, and the kind of the mechanics around it? So I hope that what I'm saying is making sense. After this year, eighth graders will have that Israel, Shoah and comparative Judaism curriculum, and seventh graders will have this, what I'm calling to you this evening, Jewish morality, Jewish values curriculum. I'll say one more thing, and that is that just for the fall, we are going to ask our seventh and eighth graders to be separated by gender. And I realize, as I'm saying these words, that's, that's a bit of a provocative place to go. But my observation over the years and others that I've spoken with has been that in that beginning of middle school, especially seventh grade, the developmental divide between most girls and most boys is pretty big. They have very different developmental needs. And we think that it could work really well for them to have some time to learn in the ways that are best for them, knowing that they will come back together as an integrated group later in the year. And partially, we're doing this because of this combined seven, eight thing. So if, if you've been following what I'm saying, in the fall, we'll have seventh and eighth grade girls, and Vanessa, I'm gonna answer that question, and seventh and eighth grade boys, learning in two parallel groups. For kids who are non-binary, we are gonna invite them to choose the group that they feel most comfortable with. So what other, any other questions about that? Before I go on, and Pam, I don't know, do you wanna add anything to what I've been saying?
Well, I guess for those of you who are not familiar with the Roche Hodesh program, I've been leading that program for quite a few years. And that program started out as just, it actually, about 20 years ago, it was actually called It's a Girl Thing. And I am telling you that it has totally changed since then. It's grown up, it's blossomed. And it's been a wonderful program. But I think that now, we are so familiar with the precepts of that program, and I wanted to just give you a couple of examples. It's kind of like we're weaving together the more contemporary Roche Hodesh curricula with Midot, okay? And so I'll give you an example. All right. So let's say the Midot is judging others favorably. And in Roche Hodesh language, it would be navigating conflict in friendships. Here's another example. Setting others on the path of truth, setting others on the path of peace. Those are two very important Midot. And in Roche Hodesh, we would connect with current events curricula. Anything to do with social justice, perhaps anything to do with social media and the problems and joys of social media. So try to embroider those, the ancient and the contemporary together. I hope I'm not confusing things either. So.
Thank you, Pam. Vanessa, do you wanna say something else?
Yes, Benji walked in and he was very excited about Pam teaching the eighth grade. FYI. Actually, my question was, and I was distracted, so you might have answered it, but the comparative Judaism part, I know, you know, prior, pre-COVID years, the seventh graders went to other synagogues to, to do that comparative Judaism part, assuming the, well, assuming, you know, things are back in person for the most part. I was wondering if that's gonna be offered for the eighth graders this year?
Yeah, I mean, we very much had intended for the comparative Judaism class pieces to be part of the seventh grade in the spring this year. I mean, you may remember that Benji was part of that group as a seventh grader. And you may also remember that we ran into some really challenging logistics as we were trying to begin to come back into person in the spring. I can't see everybody who's on the call right now, so I can't tell if anybody else is in that group. But, you know, in a lot of ways, the beginning of the pandemic was logistically easier because we all knew that we had to stay home. There was one place to be, and that was at home in front of your computer screen. This past spring, there This past spring, there was, okay, well, I think we can have some things outside together in person, but then we have to also offer them on Zoom. And I think we really had frankly, a hard time getting everybody on the same page. So we are looking forward to a much better, more accessible, more powerful, impactful presentation of that comparative Judaism piece, which can include visiting other congregations, Jewish congregations, and hopefully also other faith traditions.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so this past year, along with a lot of other disappointments, the sixth graders could not go on the New York trip, which is like a pillar of our curriculum. We did it, we actually made pickles as an activity. We did, you know, we had a lot of programs. We tried to bring New York to the Zoom. But we realized that the sixth graders, we promised them that they would be going to New York. So this year, the sixth and seventh graders will go to New York together. The time will, is to be arranged, but it will happen. We, because we made a vow, we raised our right hands, it's going to happen.
Yes. Yes. So just we, we should go into the plans for the monthly Tzedek class. Pam, do you want to talk about that or?
Sure. Okay, so I have to say that this is something that is thrilling me to pieces because I have felt for a long time that, that Jewish identity, Jewish education, anything you want to call it, does not stop the day after you become a Bar or Bat mitzvah. And I think that some of the most exciting discoveries and learning and maturing as a Jewish person happens during your teen years and beyond. So I have observed so many of the young people that I work with, they do crave all of these things. And it doesn't necessarily have to happen in a building. Okay, that's one of the things I want to say. It can happen anywhere. You can make, you can make any place spiritual. You can learn anywhere you are. And so I think that's one of the major precepts that we are dealing with now. You can learn on Zoom. Okay. So what this, this is kind of like a pilot program. It's just starting out and it's grown from two different sources. One is the same group that does Roche Chodesh asked if our congregation would pilot a program just for high school students called Benenu, which means among us together. And I led four sessions of Benenu and some of the curricula were, what is bravery? What is risk-taking? Another one was all about gender, okay? Another was really about Jewish identity, starting from you and then circles, you know, your family, your friends, your school, your community, your country, the world, et cetera. So I thought that these were really interesting, really provocative. All of the kids who participated had to give feedback to the organization. And so what we're going to do is we're going to do a combination of that program and also a study of civil rights and social justice and the histories, the civil rights histories and connections between blacks and Jews, the controversies, the debates, the commonalities, the really difficult relationships. And we're going to have a lot of guest speakers. We're going to have big projects, hopefully group projects as well as individual projects. And this will culminate in an incredible journey, both a learning journey and a physical journey down south. There's a wonderful program called Ettgar 36. And there's a program specifically tailored to what I've been talking about. You will go, you will hear about Leo Frank, you will hear about Joshua Heschel, you will go to the Edmund Pettus Bridge, you will go to the Equal Justice Lynching Museum, which is very hard for me to say. And I do think that having that at the, at the, sort of the culmination of the year will be most impactful. So, and that will be like monthly and a substantial Monday night, you know, maybe from 7:30 to 9:15, something along that. So that's kind of like the new high school initiative for right now.
Great. Thank you. So I just wanted to, I saw Rachel and I'm adding David here. Rachel, okay, David Weinberg and Rachel Singer, thank you. I think there are several Rachels of us here in this room. So she was, Rachel was just asking about registration. So Rena or Sarah, do you want to say something about that?
Yes. So we'll send out registration forms either later this week or first thing next week. So just keep an eye on your email. And we will, we will get all that to you shortly. It'll be by grade. So you'll register each of your kids individually, whichever grade that they're in. And yeah.
And also we have, the registration materials you'll get will be for members. We have different pricing for non-members and also a, a new member family incentive dues category, membership welcome category. So if you have friends with kids in school age, kids that you want to tell that you were on this awesome Zoom call and that there's this terrific Newly Mood program happening at Adat Shalom, please spread the word. You can put friends in touch with me or Sarah, Rabbi Rachel, I mean, any of us are happy to talk to you. And we're looking forward to, to growing our program. We'd love to have four classes on Monday nights, one for each grade.
Yes. Here, here. Okay, well, it's just coming up on 8:30. Is there any, any more thoughts? We really appreciate people tuning in this evening and listening. You can hear that we're very excited about these plans and looking forward to, to bringing it all together over the next few months and obviously into September. The holidays are, you know, the holidays are always on time, but the holidays are early this year. Rosh Hashanah will begin the evening of Labor Day, Monday. So we have a short summer this summer on the Jewish calendar. Anything else for any of you? Well, thank you again so much for being here with us this evening and for your interest and support. And please don't hesitate, as Rena said, to reach out with any questions at all. Everybody stay well. Enjoy this.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one more question. I went, I meant to go to, in the chat, but I sent it to Rada's. Is, we're just wondering if Michael is going to be teaching along with Pam? Or if Pam is flying solo now?
We're in the process of, we're in the process of hiring teachers for all of our programming. So what Pam talked about, that Pam is teaching, we know right now that Pam is teaching and will, you know, we're, we're recruiting, as you well know, I think now, you know, for a variety of positions related to Early Mood program. And I will just say, stay tuned.
Okay. Thanks.
Hey, everybody.
Thank you all.
Stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great to see all of you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Rena? I was about to text you.
Wait, hold on one, hold on one.
There we go.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, whoever did that. Yeah.
Um, so question, are you still looking for teachers? That's number one. And are you still looking for, to recruit teens? I don't know that Noam would be interested, but I would try to like somehow gently coax him.
Well, I, I mean, I guess, but I mean, yes, to both questions and, but what I would say is right now, and I would say this to you and any other parent of teens who says to us, oh, my kid wants to, or what do you have? We're creating a program where obviously like, we don't need 65 teenage kids on Saturday mornings, but we're going to need some. We're going to, we're in the process of kind of creating what it is, what the job description will be for the teenagers. And then I would say like, don't worry, let us recruit Noam.
You can. I will not be recruiting him for sure.
But, but like, we'll, we know, we know who all of the teens are. So yeah, so we're looking, we're looking for teachers, Hebrew Monday, looking for some folks for Saturday. I mean, we're, we're just now like, okay, this was great. I think people were really happy. Now we can go to phase two.
Right. I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is like, for those kids, because not everybody, not everybody is a leader, I think, like not all teenagers step up and to the plate and can lead necessarily or be, you know, a teacher, like per se. I think some, and I'm specifically Noam is one of them, I think. He's, he doesn't want to lead. He doesn't feel comfortable leading. But if somebody guides him, I think that would be, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would certainly say of, like, the brief window that I was steeped entirely in our Jewish education activities before COVID and all of that. We had a lot of teens who were interested in hanging around at Adat Shalom and wanting to be helpful, but there really was not a whole lot clear about what it was that they were being asked to do, what was expected of them. I mean, Pam and Michael were better than some of our other teachers in terms of what to do and, you know, we can, like, I get that now. I see, like, having seen it in real life a year and two years ago, yeah. Leaders can be made.
Yeah. No, this looks like a great program, I think.